On Tuesday twenty sixth of August and it's now six P M. The agenda starts with item one three five twenty five, apologies for absence.
Thank you, Chair. Apologies from Anne Blackborne, David Blackborne and Doug Jefferson.
That's it, isn't it? I think, yeah, thank you very much. Item one three six twenty five, declarations of any disclosable pecuniary interest. Does anyone, any declarations? Thank you. Item one three seven twenty five. Minutes of Corporate Services Committee meeting of the twenty second of July twenty twenty five. We're all happy to agree the minutes of the last meeting.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I can sign them off. Item one three eight twenty five. Financial report for the first quarter ended the thirtieth of June twenty twenty five. Thank you for this work, Alan. As ever, it's quite comprehensive. We need to approve the financial report, but beforehand, I think we should go through it. I'll start with comments from your floor, please. Is there anything Alan wants to say to the report to introduce it? Or is it as written?
I think we've done a significant amount of restructuring in order to get this report. And that was one of the reasons why it took us quite a while to do that. We've gone from something like two hundred and twenty account line items to a total of accounts just over five hundred. And what has been, what's, what it's enabled us to do is to actually repost all the entries. So then if you want to look at what does it cost, for example, utilities of this building, you can actually see that. We've re-looked at the salaries and wages, made sure that those costs are all allocated out. But what we haven't done, unfortunately, and, and we just don't have the capacity to do that, is we haven't done activity based costing, for example, within Community and Environmental Services. So we have a works team that are very diverse. They do a lot of work. One day they're doing fixing toiletries, doors, the next day that they're doing some work possibly in this building. And then elsewhere they're doing something on the, in the open spaces. But I do think that we've got a better idea of what those costs are. Our income is not, hasn't held up to the extent that I would have liked, but we do have some income due to us. For example, from the Anglia Bloom, we budgeted ten thousand pounds. We have to build some of that income because we haven't, so on the riverside in particular, we've got about six thousand pounds worth of, of, of improvements. So we incur the cost and we get that income down. So our income, we barely just made it. If you have a look at the appendix A, we, we, we were under by eight hundred and fifty seven. On the expenditure side, I'll move to that form, on the expenditure side, we've done pretty well. We've done by twelve, we've saved twelve thousand pounds, seven hundred and sixty three. And that saving has actually been a little bit of relief. Typically, we have significant savings in our salaries budget, but this year we don't. We, we, we do have some savings there, but it goes a little bit misleading because we, for example, had two staff members off in April and May for nearly the two months. We had a contract to come in. So, so we still incur the salary cost because they're on sick leave and they get paid sick leave. But we have additional costs. So I'm actually quite pleased that, that, that our costs have been there. You know, that we're, that we're on track and I think we will make some savings. So overall, for quarter one, I'm actually quite pleased. I've also, for the first time, included a cash flow, which typically a lot of councils do. And the internal auditor expects us to table a bank reconciliation. So appendix C contains a bank reconciliation. There's not very much exciting happening in the bank reconciliation because we, one thing that I'm very, that we keep our accounting records up to date. So you only have reconciling items when there's differences between what goes through your bank statement and what goes through your cash book. And you can see that there's hardly any. We've got unbanked cash and unbanked checks. We said, we, we process those, we can't process them daily because we don't have the banking facilities. So we have to post off the checks, for example, to, to our bank in Birmingham. The cash, we wait until we have sufficient enough cash and then we go to the post office to bank it. But overall, you know, our cash flow is actually quite strong. So the fact that we're taking, it's the first time we're doing it, but I think it's very good practice and we'll continue to do so.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Matt? Thanks, Alan. There was one, I was looking through that ping down. The toilet staff contract cover, nine thousand eight hundred and ninety nine pounds. And two staff members were on sick at the beginning of the year and outside toilet staff cover was contracted to assist with it. It's great, but it's a reminder to need that cover again. We can't get in the habit of, or even the, the, I don't really think this should be the first thing we did anyway. We have enough staff. I don't care if the staff don't want to clean the toilets. It's in their job description. Staff should have been sent to do that. We should not spend nearly ten grand when we're in the financial constraint that we're repeatedly in, getting in a contractor to clean some toilets. We should absolutely tell the current staff they needed to go and do that.
I, I think it really was just a matter of all the other tasks that we had on the go, they would have fallen behind, you know. So, so I understand the point and I think what we've done is we will address it. We, the lady that does the toilet cleaning, we are looking at bringing her on board. We don't have to pay a finder's fee from contract personnel. We've just got to fit it into the budget. We, we don't have weekend cover. So at the moment, we, that nine thousand includes someone coming in on the Saturday and Sunday to actually do toilet cover and that's what we're trying to address that.
And I've got a few questions if I can. I did send these to Alan in advance, so it shouldn't come as much of a shock. And there's a couple of things I wanted to check, Alan, because obviously this is the first budget report for this current financial year. So I think it's a good opportunity just to sort of test if our budget is performing as we would expect it to before we get too far into the year. And I think actually we've seen, as you mentioned, quite a lot of changes over the last couple of years. So trying to get a sort of sense of how we're doing is quite important. The first thing is obviously we're now, I think, completely moved out of King's House into the Guildhall. I was in King's House today, actually visiting the solicitors. So I assume we're not paying anything at all now as Fethford Town Council other than the Strong Room and the use of the notice board. And I just wondered if we've actually had a chance to quantify how much we're saving, you know, we had an idea of what we thought we might save by moving out of King's House. But do we know actually, was that realistic? Have we actually saved money?
We have saved ten thousand pounds in rent and we've saved fifteen thousand and ninety four pounds in business rates. The utilities we haven't saved because we haven't been paying for them. We've been allocating them out to the, to the standing force. Our electricity bills are billed all over the show, but we, when we process them, if it belongs to King's House, it gets processed. We have an intercompany account with G W Standing Force and we process that transaction to there. So the pair on our payments, because it's got paid out of direct debit into our bank account, but we don't allocate it to that cost and we have a capital of one one O five and that, that's where we posted in, in, in our general ledger. So G W Standing Force has been paying for the utilities and the, all these utilities, the utility water for quite a few, for quite a while now.
Okay. So with the rates, there was a sort of question mark as to whether we'd overpaid for a few years. Has that been resolved or are we, you know, appreciate not paying any rates now, which is great. That's fifteen thousand pounds a year. It's quite a lot of money actually in rates. You know, moving out of King's House saves the council twenty five K. I think that's, you know, quite important. But has the rates issue been resolved sort of historically and?
We've done as much as we can. Asia Revenue Partnership won't deal with us now because we actually said we're not part of our building. So they're now dealing with the clerk of G W Standing Force. Her and I have put together a whole lot of information. We are waiting for the valuation office to actually go in and have a look at that. Unfortunately, that can take up to six months. I think we're now in about month two, but it will be resolved. The lady that, that handled, picked up the call, I think she's had a nervous breakdown. There is so much data, there's so much cleansing to do, but we are confident that we'll get the money back. They're very suspicious of this for the simple reason that the charity has lower rates than we are. So they think that we, they, they don't say that you get the impression that they imply that we might be doing a little bit of rates, business rates manipulation. And that's why I need Hillary's involvement to say, no, this is a charity. We don't, we don't, we don't have those offices. The nice thing is we've got new tenants in those offices and that, that's also going to be sorted out. So we, I'm confident that we will get back money this year, extremely confident. But it might only be later on in the year when the, when the valuation officers have a chance to go in.
Okay. So best case scenario, if we get what we think we're due, how much is that?
I think we could get back probably thirty thousand.
Okay.
Good. But that's just my, that's just my guess. I wouldn't, it's a digital asset at the moment, you know, it's contributed on so many factors.
That's good. I appreciate, I mean, I've been nagging about rates for a long while, so I appreciate that's done. We're just waiting on them now. And it's not directly linked, but again, because I was in King's House today, I did see people going into the council chamber. Is that now let? We've not, we've not left Standing Force with an issue. They've actually got the money coming in for that room?
They have a lease for the council chamber. They have a lease for the old front part of the registrar's office. The only office that's, that's unlet at King's House, Standing Force, where the, the course were. So that, that needs a little bit of work on it. I think there's a bit of moisture coming into it. Otherwise, they, they, they let. In fact, we managed to save the whole forty pounds a month, I think, because we've actually given the new people, we had a wifi hub there, which we had for our council meetings and they've, they've been taken over at cost from us. So we couldn't terminate it because BT were going to charge us the same price as the, the, the remainder of the contract. So by them taking over, it's actually saved us a few, you know, probably a few hundred pounds.
Brilliant. I'm glad to hear that. So I was, I think lots of chemists were a bit worried we knew that would create a problem for Standing Force. But if they've got a new tenant, then, you know, everyone's, everyone's better off.
Looks like a reverse in fact. Can I just ask you, Alan, twenty five thousand, over what period is that? That we've saved on King's House?
Oh no, that was just, that's what we saved this year.
Okay. So this financial year?
This financial year. There's a bit of rates from last year from the council chamber, but we would charge rates for the whole of the first floor in, in, in King's House. And that money comes back to us and then gets recharged to the new, the tenants that have been there for a while and to G W Standing Force.
Okay. And the other big change has obviously been the hanging basket watering. I've seen, seen the guys out several times with new water baths and it seems to be going well. The plants are great. I always remember when I was chair of amenities, I think that was at least ten thousand pounds a year for that contract. Have we got an idea of how much that's saving?
We had a look at it this morning. Unfortunately, we didn't ask the new tenders to tender for watering the, the baskets. So I can give you an idea of what our previous contractor did, but the current ones, we didn't ask them to do it because we excluded it from the, from the contract. So I would be possibly doing some Chinese accounting if I had to, if I had to guess another. We can look at what, what, what proportion it was of the previous contract and do some costing there. But we'd have to dig up the old contract, do all the exculations and then, and then do a calculation there. But we have saved, if you look at the ventilation management contract as a whole, we have saved significant amounts of money.
And then the last one is the vehicles. So we now own four vehicles.
Vehicles.
Have all four rather than leasing. And have we got, you know, again, on test, when we make these decisions, you know, it's always an assumption that we're going to save a certain amount by doing something. But we've done it now. Do we know how much we've saved by doing that?
We have saved thirty nine thousand a year, but from that I have to just deduct the M O Ts for the new vehicles and the licensing costs when we pay for the licensing costs, because that, we, we didn't pay for that on the hired vehicles. But if we did that, I would imagine that we, we paid sixty, sixty thousand and some for the, for the vehicles. We'll get a return back over two years.
Okay. Brilliant. I mean, we'll lose a bit of interest, but actually it's minor.
Yes, yeah.
Good. I, I, I mean, there were three quite big changes within the last twelve months. I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, things are working out. And you mentioned the grounds maintenance contract. I mean, obviously we're saving quite a lot. I saw some of the, the tenders that came in and we were worried that's going to be quite a big cost. But have we reviewed what it is we're outsourcing and are there any other opportunities for bringing anything else in house? We've obviously Matt mentioned toilet cleaning and we still outsource weekend toilet cleaning. Is there anything around that or grounds maintenance that we're currently paying external contractors that could be done by our staff?
At the moment, we're targeting the toilet cleaning contract because that is, we could save significant, significant amounts of money for that. What we depend on is we've taken on the extra staff to do, enter into a contract with G W Standing Force. If that contract, now the independents have to agree in that. Unfortunately, none of, none of the council representatives because we'd, we'd be conflicted. But if we can get recovery of our labour costs, we're doing that and there'll be a summer programme and a winter programme. I think we'd easily be able to accommodate the, the cost of, of employing a toilet cleaner. We have been speaking to, to the toilet cleaner that we have. Unfortunately, this last weekend, they put a temporary one on and the complaints just didn't stop. So the toilets, yesterday, our, our guy went in and cleaned the toilets because he was going to put up with it. But they are, the lady that, that, that has been doing it traditionally is quite keen to come on. And like I said, contract personnel will not charge us a finder's fee.
Okay. So that could be something when we come to set the budget later this year, that we see a factor that in as a sort of future potential saving.
Well, we'd like to have something like that possibly by the end of, by, by, you know, by September, October, because that would give us significantly enough savings. And I think the G W Standing Force board will meet in September sometime. So hopefully we'll be able to agree that, that raise was with the town, with the town council. And that will immediately give a saving and we can immediately apply that to, to the contract.
Okay. And I'm just going to work, if anyone else wants to jump in, feel free. I'm just going to work my way through my list of ones. Insurance, obviously there's quite a big variance in the papers. I mean, it's one of our biggest single costs each year. We've agreed, we're currently on a one year contract at this moment in time, but we were going to review the specifications, see if it's accurate. It's maybe a bit busy. How's that been going?
The town officer's driving that. So she's, we've really done a fair amount in terms of making sure that we're ensuring the right things at the right place. I have been tasked to get the assets up to date. Our asset register is up to date, but all the, the items that we don't put in the asset register are not up to date. So I will take the finance officer myself and possibly someone from the works team. And we'll spend one or two days and we'll just get that really cleaned up, all the furniture fittings, the location of the furniture fittings. And then we'll have that ready. I think what we have to be careful of is that insurance quotes are only valid for about twenty eight days. And the mistake I made last year, I'll hold up my hand because we're not, we're not looking back now, I can't believe how stupid I was. We actually don't wait until, till May or June to do it. You actually do it from March, April, so that you've got time. So, you know, I'm sure the insurance will give us a quote for the next financial year, but we just get those quotes done a lot earlier. And then we have the ability to give the council a chance to have the inputs and present to you how thorough, I'm sorry, we've been in terms of getting those quotes. So we're targeting the end of the year to have that data.
Great. I mean, that's quite a bit of work, but when we're paying forty grand a year for insurance, we want to make sure we've got the right cover now.
Yeah, very much so.
Moving on to commercial property. Historically, we've always used an external property agent and they take ten percent of the rents. And we've taken some of the properties out and actually just have a direct relationship now with a couple of those tenants. But we're still paying five grand a year for agent fees. Are there any other properties that we're renting out that we need an agent for? Can we bring more in house?
The only ones that we're very reluctant to bring in house is the Semigree Cottage because residential property has changed. You actually do need someone to go and do the fire, fire alarms and everything else, but we're quite keen to bring back the rest. I've set myself a target to start that. So by the end of September, we would have had negotiations with the agents and bought them back. I mean, why we pay, why they transfer Welsh Street, for example, it's ground rent, you know, it's, it doesn't change. It's one thousand, one hundred pounds, one thousand two hundred pounds a quarter. Shandys Four, all those. But what we might have to do is just have an arrangement so that we, that if a unit goes empty, that it's in their interest to actually promote it and lease it out, because otherwise all they get, they don't get anything from it. So we'd have to look at that and I might come back to the October Corporate Services meeting and see what proposals they come back and say, yes, you know, you take back your commission because that's the whole problem. But if you want us to go find a tenant, this is what, this is what your fixed cost will be. Because otherwise, if we try and block it themselves, you know, as much as I would like to do that, we just don't, we just don't have the capacity to do it.
Okay, that's good. I mean, it used to be about ten grand a year in agent fees, I think, or closer to that anyway.
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, where they go is, is like they sent me an email today, you know, property me, why have you, have you done the recent reviews in terms of your lease agreements? And I mean, we've got a, the lease agreements are a little bit of a state because what we've done is we've quarantined different solicitors. They've all given us different lease agreements. So Shandys Four is a different lease agreement to Shandys One, it's a different lease agreement to R B L. It's just, so I asked the council's property person to come and meet me, which they did. And they've given us some tips because we, we are doing so much work that possibly we shouldn't be doing. We're doing the E I C Rs, we're doing indigenous testing, we're doing a whole lot of things. And I, I mean, I discovered today that we actually clean the windows. Why? Just cancelled that today, you know. So that's five hundred pounds, it's a thousand pounds a year, just, just do that. We're saying, no, we're not cleaning shambles, windows and shambles to windows. But it's, it's just when we start looking at the contracts and looking at our responsibilities that we start addressing that.
Good. And one of the biggest costs in terms of losses, the income for the Guildhall and the Carnegie has gone down a lot over the last year. You're certainly aware of this, but also if you were to separate out the bar, there would be, I think, huge profit and loss issues with the bar. Is this something senior management team are aware of? And I, I don't know. My, my gut is that we're losing a lot of money on the bar and the building. Do we have a plan in place to improve the number of bookings or reduce some of the costs? And will change the way the bar operates from the wastage alone, because they use a pump system. I mean, if they had a box system, wastage will, you know, reduce significantly.
We were throwing away, I, I mean, I gave an example of Guinness. I mean, I think we, we would, one keg of Guinness was sitting there. I think it got spider webs took over because it's been there so long. I've banned it from being sold because we can't sell that type of quality. We did a function on the twelfth of April and all I did is I had, I came and hopped up because they were so short-staffed. And I just walked around the tables picking up full glasses of Guinness because it was, it was off and people were quite polite. It should have come back to the bar and shut it. So they just didn't order again. So we have done that. Unfortunately, it's one of the areas that I had high hopes in the last three or four months that, that, that there would be significant changes on it and there hasn't been. So it's receiving, I have a meeting on Friday where we'll start implementing a lot of changes. On the, on the Guildhall higher, I just, it was quite interesting. I did an exercise comparing the first three months of this year with actual three months of last year. And the monthly average for, in fact, for the four months to the end of July for, for this year is three thousand and nine pounds a, a, a month. That's the average. Last year it was three thousand one hundred and twenty one. So we've had a small, we've lost some, some of our paying hires, but they were paying such a minimal amount. We were actually spending more money on, on, on seasonal staff and electricity and water. We weren't making any money. So what we're doing is, and this is the one thing that has made a little bit of traction, is we've done a huge analysis of the type of events that we have. So we are, so for example, you know, typically if we take a hire that just comes in and rents the, the premises for one or two hours, no setup costs, quite easy to do, we get, we're going to have to charge for that. But we've got big hires that come in and we can have nearly three hundred people in the Carnegie. There's security risks, there's front of house risks. So we're developing pricing packages for the different type of events. We have one, for example, for ticket events. We're at high risk on those, on those type of, of, of events. We have to have three, four staff members. If we charge twenty five pounds an hour, whatever it is, well, why do we bother? So, so that piece of work will be going to the Heritage and Events Committee meeting on the sixteenth of September with a whole lot of proposals where we can start looking at different marketing things. That will make a huge difference. So when I had expected us to, in the budget, when I set the budget, I thought that we would have a little bit more growth. We haven't had that. We, we're not worse off than last year, but we're not better, you know, we're, we're not near budget and that's what we need to start addressing.
Is, but the ones that we've lost, is there a reason we've lost? I mean, obviously the kitchen's out of action now.
No, we, we've lost, we, we lost, for example, we lost the Azumba dancer who's been here. Not only was it, we put up the prices, the prices had gone up since two thousand and nineteen, yeah, two thousand and nineteen. It was ridiculous how long the prices hadn't gone up for. So we started bringing up the prices. They compete with the gymnast, the new, you know, sixteen gymnasts come into town. They do exactly what, 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 what the person that hiring was. And then, I mean, we were charging them five, I mean, twenty pounds or something and then giving them a five pound discount. What? You know, so, I mean, you think that that's fifteen pounds, labour costs for fifteen pounds an hour, if you take into account the, the employee cost. So we were paying people to come in. So they left, Sir Rockers left, they found a town hall somewhere where, where they'd gone. They chew, you know, we were, what they were paying was, 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 was just not right. And there's a fitness guy that used to be here and we used to have some of the meetings. He just did a test, right? But again, I think all the gym activity in the town has, has had an impact on him. But what we're looking for is daytime hires, because that's where, that's our best and best of money. Is if we can have this room rented out for a daytime hire and the large court, that's where we make money. And that's where the building pays for itself.
Okay. The shambles unit that's empty and not only are we getting it, you know, not getting any rent, but presumably we're picking up the rate still for that as well at the moment.
It's eleven nineteen pounds over ten months. So it's two thousand one hundred and ninety pounds. It's the rates bill. So we are picking that up. We have been, we've, we've had a lot of interest in it, but that's as far as, that's as far as we've got. We have someone who came in on Thursday or sitting, even on Thursday, I referred them to our agents. And that's, we're, we're waiting to see, but we really have to do something with that unit because it's been, I mean, we invested probably about ten thousand pounds of repainting and doing everything else. And now it's just a matter of getting that, that, that return on. So I think, you know, I know that you've had some ideas. And I think it's, we can get the agent to pick up some of those ideas then and, you know, we can, we, we can, maybe something will happen.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it's been at least three years.
Shambles Two has been into, run about two thousand, just as, it's two thousand twenty three, the guy had moved out. He had paid his rent for a while before he moved out. That was, so he occupied it, but he didn't pay rent.
Was that the computer?
That was the computer.
That was the last tenant there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's one thing not getting any rent, picking up two grand a year, rate still top of it.
Yeah.
It's empty. That's my concern.
There, there's no outstanding issues with dampness or the roof or anything. That's all, that's what that ten grand was for, did you?
The ten grand was, and this is one of the things that we have, we are very conscious of, is getting inspection stuff. Because at the moment, no one is going and inspecting the premises. So, so we should be sending someone, and our own staff can do it. We should be sending someone in every six months. Have you put in an illegal, electrical plug points? Have you put in illegal lights? Have you done all this?
Okay.
And then making sure that that's registered and, 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 and we do it. So that's the problem that happened at unit two was the agents that we were using at the time, just were collecting the rent. Never went in and the guy had painted the walls, he had put illegal plug points in, so we had that, all that. And left us a electricity bill. We didn't pay for his electricity, but we, we had to honour it from thereafter. So pay the standing charge and everything else. So that's the other part that we pick up in the empty unit is we have to pay the standing charge of the electricity connection.
Each, each unit is individually independently metered as well.
Yes, because they're contracted with different suppliers. So, 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 you know, and the owner wouldn't let us terminate until we paid the, until we had paid our share of the ball.
Okay. Allotments. Forgive me, I might have forgotten what the situation was, but are we still charging fifty pounds for a deposit? And what's the plan to change that?
A plan goes to Community and Environmental Services meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. And what's the proposal to increase it to?
It's starting gradually to increase it because the risk is we chase away all our, it's, you know, affordability of having an allotment versus, and at the moment it's a hundred pounds. You basically, a couple of pounds, should have had a pass to take on a lot, half plot of a lot bit. So if that goes up, it's a risk that we, we won't have a lot bit of, so we have the same problem of just, you know, and it costs us money to have an allotment that's not tender their time, because we have to do all the maintenance, cross cutting during the summer and that type of thing.
Is that what we've been done to look at what a suitable deposit might be?
I am doing that at the moment. So tomorrow morning, that's my task.
Okay. I think that's probably all I'll, I've got a couple of which I'll do below the line, but I mean, that's all, you know, thinking.
Anybody else?
I, just to quickly, a couple. It's the expenditure list and apologies for the material in the email and the damage. I do apologise. And there's just a couple of things I wanted to. Um, there's just a couple of things I wanted to confirm, you know, so did you, they're being done. Well, yes, why?
Yeah, that was the force, fall last year. For the last one, I was standing in the last one, I should be in.
All right, good. Um, and it's just the basis, I want to know sort of what they are, because we've spent the money on them. But what's welfare when it comes to expenditure? We spent three, three and a half grand on wealth.
I was going to call on someone.
Yeah.
Welfare is a mixture of protective toting, because that used to go to staff welfare. It's the security costs of responding to this building, because clearly we used to have staff, they'd come in at two o'clock in the morning because the alarm would go off. We now, that's, we have a security company that does that. Uh, and it's also, we have a consulting service for the mental health of, uh, a kind of mind support for, for the staff. So that, that all sits in that code.
Okay, is there a reason why protective equipment for staff doesn't come out of the sort of like P P uniform part?
Uh, we, because we had, everything had been aggregated, this is the part of the process of what we've been doing in terms of disaggregating information. So welfare, it used to have staff, uniforms, the whole works, we've now taken that out. So when you look at this year, you won't see such a big amount because it's distributed and described fully in us, in other parts of the expenditure statement.
Okay, and four and a half grand on other telephone costs. So we've got office phones, mobile phones, office phones was like six hundred to a grand. Mobile phones is nine hundred and other telephones is four and a half grand.
Uh, we, it's probably an element of mobile phones in there, because mobile phones for fifteen to eighteen staff, uh, per year is not nine hundred and seventy pounds. So again, it was just part of the unbundling process. I don't think we did, we haven't gone back and done last year's unbundling. We did it from a point of time going forward, so halfway through last year, we decided to take out the, out the, the mobile phones plus. But we didn't go back and do it, otherwise we'd still be doing the year end for, for, for twenty twenty-five. So it's last year, unfortunately, it's not a very good basis of comparison. All it does for us is just make sure that at the higher level, the appendix A, that the figures there agree to what we had in the final financial reports for that particular year.
Um, a total of two.
Uh, so sorry, can I just jump in there? Sorry, man. Um, the staff, how, how many of our staff have mobile phones, uh, paid by the?
Uh, most of them, the only ones that don't are some of the, are, are staff in the office.
And excuse my ignorance, how many of those phones are listed on the, uh, Fettford Town Council website?
Um, probably only the emergency phone.
I do think, um, that maybe if they're getting the privilege of getting mobile phones, they should be listed. I know, I know it is something we had before, um, and certain staff members objected to having their pictures on there. Um, there was talk about getting accosted in Sainsbury's and all the rest of it. Um, but it does feel to me that if they are getting, getting the, uh, telephones paid, then their numbers should be available to the public now?
It's, it's a tricky one, because for example, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want Nick to be answering a telephone call as county manager. That, you know, that, that, that there's some, uh, leaves that written speed. That it's, it's hard to, you actually filter it a little bit, because otherwise if I put his telephone number, he's just going to spend the day answering members' phone. And the other list that we have is people, you know, as much as, and it is that the amount of queries that comes for Breckland, Norfolk County issues that we get, we will, he will just spend his day saying, sorry, it's not, it's, it's not a Fettford Town Council. So there is a balance, I, and I think it's something we can keep revisiting, but just to put enough safeguards so that we don't have our C A team answering questions that someone who prefers general office can be told quite easily.
And, uh, shift over to grant on payroll support costs. Is that where, is that what we pay people to run our payroll and referrals? Okay, thank you, I see that. And, uh, about a grand and a half on H R consultancy support, as far as I'm aware, we had no involvement with the H R consultancy scene for quite a while now, so.
No, no, they, they provide us support and they provide us, we have them on retainer. So if we need urgent, uh, finance, uh, H R support, they, they respond immediately. Uh, and they also just make, uh, provide support over a period of time.
How much is the retainer?
Uh, the total contract for them was seven and a half thousand for a year.
Hmm, okay. That's one I'm probably looking at topping, to be honest.
I think at the moment, I would cry if you did that, because we have some serious A R issues.
We do, but the, the flip side is I'm incredibly disappointed that we had a full H R consultancy framework put in place. If we're still having issues, then has the staff been adapting on what was put in place about, what, a year ago now, was it?
It started at the beginning of this calendar year, you know.
Yeah.
So, so we six, six to seven months into it.
I am aware of some of this.
And just only because I don't know what they are, and so just sort of, let me know. Uh, a subscription to Wix, lots of work, website, thank you.
For website. Um, we apparently, that is, we, we've investigated all those costs. What happens is that those costs get, will put your credit card. So what we've done is we removed all the costs from the credit card and we now, so that that credit card no longer gets any debits. And then we've managed to get into this Wix and someone has assured me that we do need it, it's not a substantial amount.
Is Wix not a telephone system?
No, Wix is a website.
Oh, I use it.
It's a, um.
Facebook developer.
It's a hosting, it's a, do some of the hosting that we have.
Okay, and I know Spotify, Infotime.
Infotime is our booking in system, our I S system.
Absolutely fine. Realtors?
Realtors is our allotment software.
Do you need that?
Uh, we do.
Yes, I know, it's, it's fine.
I'll just give you an example, we have, uh, just above the drive, we have a hundred and thirty, about a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty allotment holders. We have fifty something at, at Berry's, at Berry Road. We send out all the letters, all the correspondence, and if we didn't have the software, they used to have someone sitting in the office for six weeks at a time, typing up and posting off all the letters. This software has enabled us to make, to mechanise and, and, and use a little bit of electronic to, to do it.
If it's cheaper than Matt was on file about, um, Sage, is that very similar to C D C Sage?
Yes.
And Prime, that's fine. Other subscriptions, four hundred and eighty-one, four hundred and seventy-nine, that's quite a bit on miscellaneous subscriptions.
Uh, we have to subscribe, uh, I'd have to do, I could, I could, what I'd have to do is, because they all lost his subscriptions. And you'll notice that we don't have a, oh, we do have other for this year, four hundred and seventy-nine pounds, so I'll, I'll have, I'll have a look at that for you and we'll put back.
I know, I know I'm sort of penny-dinging, but you know, in subscriptions alone, it's about five, six grand when you add it all together, so I have no problem.
I, I would assume some of them are trade journals, that sort of thing.
Uh, no, these, most of them would be electronic, uh, electronic subscriptions. So we subscribe to, uh, uh, it's part of our software support, we have to subscribe to certain, uh, softwares. Um, let's have a look. There, InTune, InTune is an old, is our Microsoft Office, one of our Microsoft Offices, um, um, subscriptions, so I, but I can have a look at them. Uh, the, this used to all be bundled, so you would never have noticed it, so even I'm learning.
No, I appreciate it.
We, 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 what, what are we actually subscribing to?
And Christmas lights, I know we're gonna, that's gonna be a much deeper conversation with the Heritage Events team, that's fine. And one thousand three hundred on civic regalia, we, what are we paying for the, to offer the regalia for?
Uh, there would have been repairs to chains.
We could charge Chris Harvey for breaking it.
Uh, I, I'm not too sure, but it would be around repairs to, to some of the, uh, regalia that we have.
I just wondered, are we buying more?
We are, because the, the hat that was given didn't actually fit me, so I've been bought a new hat.
Okay.
So I'm to blame for that one, I'm afraid.
Do you not have a bigger hat that I could have given you instead?
Sorry?
Do we not have a bigger hat we could have just given you instead?
Apparently they're all standard size, having a massive noggin.
Okay, uh, I think there were only a couple more, so, uh, that's, that one's fine. Starts falling to anyone, but I'll forgive you this time, this time only. I know one more, vehicle leasing, that's done and gone now, because we own it, that's fantastic. Great, and cemetery, uh, cemetery salaries, why is that separate? Don't, is it not just our own staff? Why does it come under here rather than as a seller, salary salary? Cemetery salary versus a just staffing costs?
Because we've unbundled them, so we can start to see what the costs are, so you'll see allotments have got the same thing, they have salaries. The general, the market has got separate salaries, so, so we can understand the functional costs of some of those activities.
Thank you very much, um, I think, I mean, there we go. Market salaries, was that for the, the market coordinator person? And then we don't sort of have that position anymore, do we?
No, we do.
Yes, we do.
We do, we have a fantastic box.
She probably not be that close. Uh, it's Julia Field, you're over, um, she's brilliant, she's absolutely brilliant, worth a wait and go. Excellent, so, um, coffee machines. You are lucky that David is not here. Um, is that now or? Coffee machines.
We signed a four-year lease. I can't justify it, I, I discovered that because all of a sudden we had charges going through our, through our bank statement. Uh, and we pay a company called Tower Leasing for, for that, we try to get out of them, uh, we can't.
Far into the four-year.
I'm liking, I'm hoping that we've, I sent an email to, to our contracts manager, um, in the answer tomorrow morning. So I'm hoping it's not more than a year, because they came in just as COVID and twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, I think they came in, so there might, there might be an angry suit, but I'll give confirmation rather than giving my speculation.
We've got two fancy coffee machines, one in the Gilth, uh, the Carnegie Bar, presumably the one in here is being taken out. We've got the banking hub going.
Yes, yeah.
So it's completely, you know, done.
So that, that's unfortunate in that it's redundant, but I think it's probably better than it is, and we're not spending more on coffee than if we put it elsewhere.
These are vending machines, are they?
No, just machines.
Okay, all right, yeah, the filters.
And the last one, then I'm done, I promise. Um, back to the sort of H R consultancy, I'm still getting about that, and I know we've got a lot of issues going on, but it is an incredible amount. So we had in the first column, uh, up higher, and up higher in the list, it was eight hundred and eighty, and then the next column was five hundred. And then the second to last one, we had two thousand five hundred, two thousand five hundred.
That's budget, we haven't spent any money this, fine, in the first quarter, we hadn't spent anything.
Okay.
So we've done the green, two, two and a half means we're under budget.
Okay, good. I don't want to tell you that we, we, we don't do that, it's my decision for sort of me to make on my own, um. I just think that is a, a lot of money being spent on retainer at the moment.
It's a high element of consultancy at the moment, um.
Yeah, I'm aware of this.
Yeah.
We might need a separate conversation, because i- if you look at it, if, um, if the council makes one poor decision and somebody sues us in an employment tribunal, and that's seven and a half grand, looks like a good investment.
It does, I get your point, but we've spent an awful lot of money on them so far, we're not in a position where we know on the need and then it's an absolute waste of money so far.
I think the question is, what's the plan to phase them out? It shouldn't be an ongoing solution, it should be, you know, seven and a half grand this year, next year it'll be five grand the year after.
It would be, my view, that's the sort of discussion that might be had better had under the deadline.
Yeah, and also with the time talks.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And. Oh, you don't? Yes, oh, sorry, I, I figured, has anybody else any further questions?
Actually, I, I wonder. I, I, I wonder if you're. And Tellaroo, separate bank account, Tellaroo, is there a reason we're not putting that in with, um, something like the Unity or the Bar? It's just we get more money in one account therefore higher interest in it, rather than.
Tellaroo is a payment platform, so we used to use, uh, Barclays, they used to, they had a payment platform that our payroll providers could load up to and then authorize. And they fall, they closed it down at very short notice, uh, so all, we, we don't accrue any costs. But all they, we, we use that to, to distribute the salaries, because obviously that's confidential information. So myself and the time clerk are the only ones that, we sign off one leg of it and the payroll provider signs off the other leg of it. It, it's just that we can have secret privacy over our, uh, staff payroll.
Okay. Do we need privacy in that? I mean, salaries and public information for?
Uh, no, no, they don't.
Why aren't they? But, but all public service sort of jobs are visible salaries?
Oh, yes, but, but, but we don't, it's got bank account details, so, so, so we'd be at the risk of having that information.
I'm being this.
The public domain.
I wouldn't want that, right? Now I'm proper done.
You're proper, you're done, done?
Proper done this time.
Okay. Anybody else? Thank you, that was very interesting. Uh, we now move on to one three nine twenty-five exclusion of press and public to consider resolving that. Pursuant to the Public Bodies of Mission to Meetings Act nineteen sixteen, the press and public should be excluded for any remaining items of business on the grounds that publicity would be prejudicial to the public interest by reason of confidential nature of the business to be discussed. Um, are we happy to, uh, exclude the press and public? Thank you. Could someone join me? Thank you, close the door. Thanks, Ron.